Meeting dated Tuesday, December 18th. Start off with roll call to my left, please.
Brian Schwann, council member.
Caroline Hale, council member.
Ben Lawrence, mayor.
Clark C.R. Nelson, council member.
Greg Schneider, council member.
Mike Keller, police chief.
Paula Bab, deputy city clerk.
Chad Russell, fire chief.
Jennifer McCosland, assistant city administrator.
J.T. Klaus, city attorney.
Les Mangas, director of public works.
Susan Renner, city clerk.
Mark Datter, city administrator.
You notice we're a little short up here. We have barely the quorum. There's four of us. Mr. Warrington sends his regards. He had knee surgery yesterday, so I wish him a speedy recovery. Mr. Taber will be here shortly. Just had an impossible conflict to navigate this evening. So, move on to the invocation. I believe we have Pastor Kyle, is that Cocklemire?
Cocklemire.
Cocklemire with Journey Church. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Let's pray. God of grace and mercy, we pause here tonight to recognize your presence here among us. We thank you that you are at work in our lives, sometimes in ways that we don't even recognize. We know that for many, there's a lot going on tonight during this holiday season. And so, we pray that as we gather to do some important work for our city, we pray that the distractions of our lives, we can maybe set aside for a moment to take some deep breaths and seek your wisdom and some good decision-making on behalf of our city. And we pray that this time would be filled with your wisdom and your grace to be servant leaders of Andover. So, Lord, we pray your blessing on this time and your direction during this meeting. In your name we pray. Amen.
Do you wish to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the public forum, I'd like to make a quick announcement that KU is playing this evening. And if anybody mentions the score, you'll be escorted out of the building. And if it's any of the staff, you will be promptly fired.
It's two to nothing right now.
You will be properly censured for that. This is a public forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Nobody. We will move on to item number six. I don't believe I have anything additional this evening on the agenda. Is that correct?
No, sir. I think we have plenty tonight.
Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Brian, to accept the agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven. We have a request for water service, I believe, this evening. You're welcome to come on up. If you give us your name and address for the council, please.
Yeah. Vance Garwood is my name. You want my address where we live now or the property address? Technically, don't have an address for the property yet, but...
Either is fine.
Okay. Our current residence is 1912 North 159th Street East, just south of 159th and 21st Street. As I think you can see in your property packet, there's a few items there that we prepared, and Susan was kind enough to include. We recently purchased the southwest corner, as you can see. It's the portion of the map where the number six is. Purchased the southwest corner there of 29th or 60th and Andover Road. And we plan to build a single residence there next year. And there's no water service available. And we've been contacted recently, as you can see in here, by the Rural Water District Number Five. They're embarking on a significant water improvement project to bring a 12-inch water main from Greenwich, even east of Andover Road a few miles. And they've asked us to sign an easement to allow that main to go across the north side of our property. And as you can see in the paperwork as well, initially, we thought that was great news because we'd be able to be served by a water source other than a well. But then, we realized we were in the Andover jurisdiction for water, even though there's no water main or service available. And so, what I'm requesting is that we be allowed to be served by the water main that will be running on our property, until which time the city of Andover were to extend water service north of Andover Road for us to be able to connect to it.
Should be plenty of pressure.
Yeah. I hope so.
So, this agreement is with the city of Wichita, too, because our agreement says we can't serve anybody outside the city limits, right? So, we're talking about a three-party agreement? Has it... All parties tentatively agreed already? And...
We've not talked with Wichita about this particular location, but we do have arrangements similar to this at other locations with Wichita.
Fair enough. So, this is your request?
Yes, sir.
You? Council, have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would authorize or move to authorize the staff to draft and solicit an agreement between the city of Andover, Wichita Water Department, and Rural Water District Number Five to allow Mr. Garwood to use the Water District Number Five water for a new, single-family residence until such time as Andover Wichita Water Service is available.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Caroline, to approve or authorize staff to draft and solicit this agreement. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item number eight is the consent agenda. That is items 8.1 through 8.8. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 8.1 through 8.8.
Second.
All right. Motion by Greg, second by Brian, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, 2018 amended budget. Let's go through the details here. Brief synopsis before I open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, this is primarily related to the starting of the amphitheater. We really, in the, I guess it'd be the 2018 budget, we're just kind of in our infancy of putting all that together. And we, this year, hopefully, next year, we'll have a little bit cleaner budgeting with it. But this year, we waited until 2018 to look at our expenses and the revenues that came in and the various funds that were affected by it, and have done amended budgets on those. Some of those had to do with improvements related to the opening of the amphitheater. Some of it's just a matter of recording where we put the receipts for the concerts and that type of thing. But if I had to talk about this entire budget amendment, it's primarily related to that. I think I see a couple of street impact expense that was... Expenses were slightly more than we anticipated in that fund. But just as a reminder to everybody, when we do a budget amendment, there are no taxes being raised or levied or associated with it whatsoever. We're mostly dealing with fund balances that were slightly different from, well, were different from what we projected in 2017 for the 2018 budget. So, all the cash is there to pay for all this. It's just a question of having the budget authority, and the state makes you do amendments. If you're going to exceed the budget authority, you approve...
For each fund.
2017 for the 2018 budget. But we do need to have a public hearing if everybody wants to comment on that.
Right. At this time, I opened up the public hearing concerning the amended 2018 budget and asked if anybody would like to speak. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to the amended budget decision itself. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the 2018 amended budget as presented.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Caroline, to approve the 2018 amended budget as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10. We have a Sierra Malte beverage license. It's a brand-new one for the new Jump Start, I guess, at 21st and Andover Road?
Yes. And they're also asking for a... It's a new and a renewal. They took possession of the store on December the first and have been waiting for this meeting patiently to get the approval on this license through the end of the year. And then, also in the motion would be to renew the license for 2019. They've made payment for both licenses, and I believe I provided all the information about their licenses in other locations and...
Questions?
I would move to approve the CMB license for Jump Start stores for the remaining part of 2018 and all of 2019 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Brian, to approve the Sierra Malte beverage licenses as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you have that with you this evening?
I do, but we're gonna need the treasurer's signature on it. So, I'm already spoke with them, and we're gonna get that taken care of first thing.
All right. Item number 11. Workers' compensation insurance.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, we have Dusty Davis here, our broker for property and liability insurance, and he is going to present to you the workers' compensation proposals.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you again for allowing me to... Allowed me to present the work comp for the city of Andover. What we've done this year is, we did go out to Travelers to approach them for a proposal for the work comp. Throughout the years, you've been with K-MET for a number of years. If you recall back in April, we actually moved the package proposal from EMC to Travelers, which was a significant savings overall, but also improved on some coverages that we had. Ideally, we did the same for the work comp for this upcoming renewal for January. Work comp is based off payrolls, so we matched up the payrolls that we have for each class code. Travelers, as you recall, when we did this, their specialty is going into larger cities. And as Andover continues to grow, we thought this was the right time to look at the work comp as well. So, in your packet, there's a proposal that we presented. We also, K-MET has offered their proposal as well. We've worked with them for a number of years on this. As you grow, we think it's a better fit for the city to maybe with the Travelers program. Couple reasons behind that. K-MET does a great job for the smaller schools, or the small cities. But as you grow, there's some other capabilities that Travelers has that can help the city grow and help in those situations. So, with that, you can see the two different premium comparisons that we did on the summary page there. Travelers came in at $81,679 compared to the $119,870 from K-MET. So, I know there's been some discussion on this the prior council meetings. I'm just here to answer any questions we need to or further explain anything that we need to do on our end.
I have one. Travelers offers at least or better risk mitigation and training services in K-MET. They offer that programming?
They have a complete realm of their risk control, what they do on any of that. It's as much as the city wants in any level. Their loss control reps been to the city several times, met with several different departments. That's one reason why this probably looks so attractive as well. Everything you guys are doing in the right setting.
It's a good model.
Huh?
It's a good model.
It is. And so, there's a lot of services there that we can utilize from Travelers on that side.
Fair enough. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would move authorization to purchase workers' compensation insurance with Travelers for the year 2019.
Motion by C.R., second by Brian, to approve the workers' compensation insurance through Travelers. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 12. Unified Planning Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna let our city attorney, since he negotiated most of this deal, explain the pieces of it. But I would like to get the PowerPoint up and go over the major financial implications of this deal, because it's a pretty far-encompassing deal between us and the school district related to their bond issue that passed in May of 2017. Of course, what goes along with any $187 million bond issue is infrastructure that needs to service the various sites on 159th and 13th where the new Metal Arc Elementary School will be. On Yorktown Road, of course, we've been planning for quite some time, for over 20 years with the school district. But now, writing those terms down in terms of who's going to pay what precisely, we think we stuck pretty much to the old agreement. And then, on North Andover Road, we believe there'll be some need for traffic improvements in that area. So, if we could start with the first slide. So, I can click myself or...
Okay.
All right. Well, whatever. I didn't know where that had... Looking at the Metal Arc Elementary School, we've got an estimate of between $650,000 to $1 million. You'll find that these numbers aren't exact. The city said they would pay 100% of the sewer improvements running on the other side of the KTA Bridge over 159th. Of course, we have a local property owner who we think is, you know, Terrady and Golf and Country Club, who we think could benefit from this as well as the school district. So, there's a couple of partners there. But that's, I would upfront say this is our major concession in this deal is that we're saying we're gonna pay for the sanitary sewer. Then, any water main extensions along 159th south of KTA would be 50-50 between the school district and the city. 159th and East Street arterial improvements, 13th Street arterial improvements, including acceleration and deceleration-laid school zone lights would be 100% to the USD 385. And then, internal public streets would be 100% to USD 385. This is an older project that we did last spring, but I think it's worth mentioning that we helped, we spent approximately $40,000 to help them with drainage behind the Andover District Stadium. And then, looking at Yorktown Road, Douglas to Central, right now, we have an estimate of approximately $3 million for that road. And it would be 75% to the city, 25% to the school district, and the water line, we would pay for city at large. And then, North Andover Road, based on the TEEP study we did a couple of years, again, this could vary a little bit. Our engineers and community development director, the schools' engineers are looking at this, but we're estimating $2 million. I think the police department would agree that some improvements are needed there for safety purposes. So, we're looking at also the realignment of the front drive to Allison. 50% city, 50% school district. The financing mechanism on this, you know, I would like to hope that the city could come up with $2 million in cash. The bidding, that would happen earlier on Yorktown Road, or will happen later on the agenda on Yorktown Road, is gonna be helpful towards that. But we're also going to have to issue debt on behalf of the school district, and they'll pay every portion of their payments via 20-year bond issue that will be spread through special assessments. They did give some indication to our assistant and assistant city administrator that it's possible that they'll pay a little bit of cash down on that, too. We'll just have to work through the logistics of that when the bond issue is actually done. But this is the big portion of it for you. I would like the city attorney to talk a little bit before we get into a full-blown discussion about how he and the school board attorney came about this joint agreement. I ask for some work in the future between the two bodies that I think would have been helpful in this situation, would be helpful in the future. Plus, we have some use of property between the school district and the city that's indicated in this agreement as well.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, what I would add to that is that there really is a broader intent. I think the city administrator's done an excellent job of pointing out to you what the intent is as it relates to the costs to the city, which I know are always a tremendous consideration for your fiduciary duty. But I would point out, there's a broader intent to the document in that it more or less creates a unified planning committee and mechanism for the future where appointees from this body and/or staff would meet there, and so that these, all of these issues can be coordinated in the future and actually also coordinates the use of facilities as it relates to shared use of the amphitheater for the potential future, shared use of the school district parking, shared use of school district sporting facilities for city-sponsored leagues and all of that. So, there really is a broader construct here. The other thing I wanted to say is that I think, my having negotiated, it is a pretty strong term. I think staff got together and really had a general idea of what they thought would work between the administration of the school district in here, and so that was suggested. And it's incorporated as an intent because legally, I don't really think you can legally bind future councils to this particular arrangement, and that would also be true of the school board. The administration here at the city and staff, however, thought it would be extremely helpful if they would at least know what the playing field looks like on matters related to the bond issue going forward, that they knew that they could have some expectations as far as what both the current school district would support and what the current city would support. And so, with respect to the finite details of how that would be laid out in this agreement, we did negotiate those with Tim Cannell and prepared the agreement. Whether or not these things in here are things you want to do, of course, is ultimately your decision, and the intent was to really sort of both on the, I think, the school district side, but also on the city side, to sort of lay out a plan going forward, which you can decide you like or don't like now, so that staff on either side isn't sort of left to struggle with what the intent is as you move forward. To highlight that specific case, there was kind of a, I won't use the word emergency, but there was sort of a hurried decision that had to be made with respect to some paving of a drainage. It was a small decision for you earlier in the year, and no one had any idea how that might turn out. So, the intent here was to sort of not leave those things to that point where, you know, somebody has to pay for this, and it's on city property. So, you know, they can't really do it, but do you really want to now that it's been constructed? So, to sort of avoid those collisions, I think, Mark, is it fair to say that having an established intent was the goal here? You know, whether or not it's something you want to do is your decision, and I, you know, I think there are a lot of details in the agreement. If you have questions about those, I'd be delighted to answer them.
I have one clarification.
Go ahead.
It's on? Oh, it went off. The Yorktown, you mentioned earlier about the division between $3 million project and division between the schools and the city. So, when you referenced that, you were talking the entire Yorktown project? Because I thought it was a, you know, we were only talking about the area where it would cross the school property. So, I want that...
So, the original agreement was 50-50 on both of those things. What I said to the superintendent was, but it was 50-50, right, on the portion that crossed the school property. And in my view, it was about an equal split to just say the whole project was 75-25. I thought that might be more understandable for everybody instead of going into, you know, this section is, you know, worth it.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure we hadn't gone down to 75-25 on, yeah, okay. So, that's good.
It was, the language developed in an agreement 20 years ago, and, you know, I don't think anybody anticipated quite what the road is. But the road was anticipated 20 years ago. Just what the road is gonna look like is probably a little bit different than we originally anticipated. So, I just wanted to make everybody clear on that portion.
Any other questions? Go right ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the joint agreement between USD 385 and the city of Andover for the purpose of forming a district-city unified planning committee to further clarify cooperative usage of each entity's property, to determine the cost share of the infrastructure improvements related to the USD 385 school bond issue, and authorize the mayor to sign such an agreement.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Caroline, to approve the coordination agreement as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, Yorktown Parkway Project. These are the aforementioned really good bids on this project, right?
We're happy to bring you some bids that were over $1 million, under the engineer's estimate. We had just three bidders, but they were different combinations of subcontractors and very favorable bids. They were all within about 10% of each other, so that tells us that it was a good set of plans and that the industry is hungry.
Excellent. Evening.
We have Michael Bailey here from Trans Systems, if you have any questions about those bids or the project as a whole.
Well, obviously, we've been working on this for a long time, and we're finally at that, finally at that point, so I don't have any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Greg.
I move to accept the low bid for the base, low bid for the base bid and alternate of $2,485,132.64 for Cornijo and Sons LLC for street and water improvements for Yorktown Parkway Phase One from US 54 slash 400 to Douglas Avenue.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Greg, and second by C.R., to accept the low bid from Cornijo and Sons for $2,485,132.64 as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Excellent. When will construction begin? Spring?
We would anticipate some work beginning out there, maybe as early as late January.
Wow.
Tree removal, water line installation, storm sewer.
Tools. All right. Move on to item 14, the Andover Road Bike Ped Project.
As you're all aware, we were awarded WAMPO TIP funding for a 10-foot bike pedestrian path on Andover Road from Central to US 54. As a part of those projects, we have to select a consulting engineer to draw the plans. So, we've kind of adopted the KDOT's qualification-based selection method to select those engineers. And we went through that process with a committee of the mayor and liaison Schwann and city staff. And we're here tonight to recommend to you Garver LLC as our consultant for that project. They are a larger firm that recently bought out a longtime Wichita firm, Ruggles &amp; Bohm, and along with that buyout, brought some new capabilities to the firm. And I've got Mark Dolacek here from Garver tonight, if you have any questions of him. But we're happy to recommend those consultants to you.
What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I would authorize the staff to begin negotiating a contract for preliminary engineering for the Andover Bike Pedestrian Path Central through US 54 project with Garver LLC.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Caroline, to authorize staff to negotiate Garver LLC for the engineering contract. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, Four Mile Creek Project.
We've used a similar selection criteria for selection of this water reuse... We've used a similar selection criteria for selection of this water reuse project consulting engineer. Staff met with the mayor and representatives from Terradyne Golf Course and Flynn Hills National Golf Course and evaluated proposals from different consulting engineers. And we're happy there to recommend to you Burns and McDonald. The City of Andover has a long relationship with Burns and McDonald. Some of you may remember that Burns and Mac designed our wastewater plant back in nineteen ninety-five and then was back a few years ago to do some upgrades to the plant. And they've also done a lot of work for the City of Wichita. So there are good relationships there and good local knowledge of, of the John Mitchell is here from Burns and McDonald as well as Michaela Rimkowski from their local office. If you have any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Greg.
I move to authorize staff to begin contract negotiations with Burns and McDonald for a feasibility analyst of the potential reuse of treated wastewater affluent from the water Four Mile, Wichita Four Mile Creek wastewater treatment facility on area golf courses.
Second.
All right, motion by Greg, seconded by Caroline to authorize staff to negotiate with Burns and McDonald for the affluent water project as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, this is an awful expensive truck.
Yes. So a little history of why we're, a little information, back information of why we're bringing it to you today versus in nineteen when this actually was scheduled for a purchase. We recently started going through our winter operations, particularly snow and ice operations procedures and looking at the technologies out there. We sent our street crew chief, Vern Tripp, to winter operations certification courses in Kansas City to APWA. Brought back a lot of information. We worked on our standard operating procedure. One of the things we were looking at is utilizing some of the better technologies to limit the amount of sand we have to put down on the roads and, on the main roads in particular. In doing that, we realized that, you know, we really had one truck, the, I don't know if you paid attention, but we have one white dump truck that's set up with a nice salt sand spreader that particularly allows us to do things like what they call pre-wet it, add some chemical to it to help our thawing agents work better, allow us to control our salt application down to a pretty fine method so we can apply a very accurate rate depending on the event. And so we knew we had in the twenty-nineteen budget, a dump truck already in the budget. Knowing how these can take considerable amount of time to purchase, I instructed Bill Bratch, the street superintendent, to begin the process to put together specs and go out and look for what we were going to look for and so forth. And he reminded me, and I had forgotten this, but he reminded me at the time, the last time we purchased one of these trucks, that white truck I just mentioned, we bought it under the state contract. The state does a bidding process and a spec-ing process and they've been extremely happy with it. He then went and checked in on that and got ahold of the current state contract holder. They mentioned they had two trucks left in the program yet this year and that if we hurried, we could get in the list to get one and we'd be available in January. So I got ahold of Donna to make sure that our, our motion was adequate for the auditor because what we're really asking still to make that purchase in nineteen, but they want a commitment to hold it from us so we can actually buy it. Because what they're telling us, if we don't buy it now, there is a likelihood it'll be close to next winter before we can get one because there's a backlog on them now. So the motion in particular, you'll notice it, it mentions that it's to purchase in twenty, January of twenty nineteen. So basically what we're here for tonight is to get the authorization to purchase this one hundred and sixty-four thousand, four eighty-one dollar truck. This includes the plow, the salt and spreader, salt sand spreader. And there's just a few, several upgrades from the last time we bought one, but it's about twenty-five thousand dollars more. I think it was six years ago or seven years ago we bought the last one. They do now have stainless steel beds that help us with the, you know, biggest problem we have with these pieces of equipment a lot of times is the salt can be extremely corrosive. They have tanks in them that hold a calcium chloride or magnesium chloride that we can pre-wet our salt to make it more active and thaw to a much lower temperature. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer.
Can this truck be used for other services?
Yes. During the summertime, during the non-wintertime, we pull the bed off and it just operates as a dump truck, tandem dump truck. So yes. It's a dual purpose. I mean, our primary purpose of it is a dump truck most of the time.
And you think you need this vehicle?
Yes. It is replacing a nineteen ninety-one vehicle. The technology's in it is just, it doesn't allow us to do a lot of things we want to do with our, that's out there now.
Any other questions from the bench? I'm temporarily taking over for Ben here. Saying none, do we have a motion of any type?
I move that we authorize the staff for a purchase of a frontliner mono eight SD equipped, it's a dump truck, with a, equipped with snow plow, salt, sand spreader, and a dump bed in the amount of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars from Truck Center Companies of Wichita in January of two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
We've got a motion by Caroline and an appropriate second by Brian. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
By the way, I wanted to thank you for the other evening hometown Christmas, the, the light countdown thing actually worked just fine for Santa to put those lights on. And I really appreciate you doing that.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, we're now on item number eighteen, site plan review procedures and-
Seventeen.
Well, I wanted to.
Seven down.
I, I was pretty sure I was going to have these guys go outside. Seventeen zoning regulations and subdivision regulations. Like a Steven Spielberg movie, this is two years in the making, our new zoning regulations, site plan standards in the format of a uniform development manual. You'll notice that these regulations are broken up into several different actions. The first is the zoning and subdivision ordinance, next is site plan review, then to adopt the manual as a format, and then the final would be the floodplain. So we'll, we'll take those apart one at a time. The first is the ordinance that just adopts the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations. We've presented these to you several times over the course of their development. We're at that final stage now to adopt that ordinance and answer any questions you may have about those regulations are the Fosters, David and Deborah. Do we want to hear from Mr. Foster? I will say that your patience has been unbelievable for both of you to get this thing into the position that it's in today. And I hope that it passes. Do you have any preliminary comments of any type?
I would just congratulate the city. It's, it's been quite an effort to pull all this together for you. And I, I think thanks needs to go especially to staff for their efforts. And Bickley Foster wanted, Foster Associates wanted me to make sure and pass along his thanks as well and, and all the effort that went into it. You know, between the planning commission, the site plan review committee, and the input that was received from the development industry, that's what I think is really going to make this document work well for you. Thank you.
Very good. So we have any further discussion on this particular ordinance? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to accept the recommendation of the planning commission to approve a uni-
To approve a unified development ordinance as submitted incorporating by reference zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, and definitions in the form of a model code book.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Caroline and a second by Brian to accept the recommendations as submitted on the zoning regulations and subdivision regulations. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on item number eighteen.
Site plan review procedures and standards.
The second part of that document, the site plan review procedures and standards are adopted in the form of an ordinance, or excuse me, in the form of a resolution because they're, they're more like guidelines and just the procedures for how the committee evaluates a project. So we've put that all together in a resolution that will be a part of the uniform development manual, but has its own separate resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving new site plan procedures and standards as recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
All right, motion by Greg, seconded by Caroline to approve the new site plan review procedures and standards in resolution form. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nineteen, the UD manual.
This resolution just adopts the uniform development manual as a format for all of these regulations so that when a person opens the document, they know that that is the full set of regulations. It's adopted as a procedural-type document in resolution format.
Just a question. Actually, everybody can access this electronically now, correct? I mean, you're saying-
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's not a case of really having to have some manual like this, they can read it all?
Yes, but it's all in one location.
Right.
Searchable in one location. It has links to other documents. It's-
Excellent.
It will be a tremendous electronic document that's easy for the public as well as the stakeholders to use.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt a resolution approving the unified development manual as a single document incorporating the unified development ordinance, the site plan review procedures and standards, and a section which links to websites and other regs, codes, and planning documents.
Second.
Motion by CR, seconded by Greg to approve the resolution adopting the unified development manual. Further discussion? I would like to say many thanks to staff and our consultants. You've put in countless hours and hours and hours of work on this. So your hard work is much appreciated and I think Andover's a, can be a better town for it. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty, floodplain management.
This last ordinance extracts the floodplain regulations from the zoning as they were in the past and makes the floodplain regulations a standalone document. There's, there's a reason for that. The State of Kansas administers regulations that were adopted by FEMA and passes those down to the local jurisdiction. And any time that those regulations are incorporated into a set of zoning regulations, every time anything is changed in the zoning regulations, the whole document has to go to the Kansas Department of Agriculture for review and approval before those amendments can be made. So this just makes it standalone. So anytime we make a change in zoning or subdivision or site planning, we don't have to go back to the State of Kansas to get approval of those changes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance incorporating by reference the floodplain management ordinance as recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
Motion by Greg, seconded by Caroline to approve the ordinance as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Any opposed? Motion carries. I don't know where that's coming from. I've done it the last two meetings running. Item twenty-one, city boundary, two thousand and eighteen.
Here in council, Steve Anderson, city engineer. This is a routine end-of-year resolution which basically amends the city boundary to reflect the ordinance whereby you annex school property at one hundred fifty-ninth and thirteen. I would recommend you adopt it. I don't know why you wouldn't.
There are several reasons that we need to talk about.
Mr. Mayor?
Caroline.
I move to adopt the resolution declaring the legal boundaries of the City of Andover in two thousand and eighteen and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Caroline, seconded by Brian to adopt the resolution as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item twenty-two, phone system. Little bit of an upgrade. Evening, Mr. Brown.
Good evening. Yeah, we're looking at quite an upgrade here. Before I start, I'd like to acknowledge the team that helped me work through this. We had Becky Tapia, Becky Page, administrative assistant at Police Department, Felicia Massey from the Fire Department. We had Selfiken and Paula Bab and Dana DeFrend here at City Hall. And they all helped me work through the usage and the needs and everything we have here. So they were a great asset to making this evaluation. Anyway, we went through and looked at our current system and what features we have and are using. And we also looked at other features that we wanted to see out of an upgraded system and sent that information out to a number of vendors. And we got quite a few responses. We get seven, or eight bids back from nine different vendors. And then we went through the analysis process, looking at how well they met the requirements and then trying to do a, cost analysis was difficult because some of them gave us a one-time cost and said, here's what it's going to cost you. Others said, we'll bill you month by month and all of that. But eventually, we came up with a cost model that allowed us to determine that Cox both met the lowest cost bid as well as the functionally best fit for our needs. So the recommendation of the phone team is that we go with the Cox system. Basically, it's going to be about twenty-seven hundred, twenty-five dollars a month. That will vary depending on exactly how many handsets we've got out there or the features we use, but that's roughly what it's going to cost through the life of the system. Our current system, we're paying, we paid upfront, let's see, I don't remember what the original was, but our extension contract was like thirty thousand. And then we're paying another almost two thousand a month just for the phone lines to service that. And that's all included in this bid here. So we'd like to recommend that we upgrade the system to the Cox IP-centric phone system. Any questions?
You realize that everybody's been on a roll tonight until now?
Thank you, Clark.
I don't think it should change. In that connection, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the agreement for the Cox IP Centrex phone system as presented.
Second.
Motion by CR, seconded by Greg to approve the agreement as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Way to get on that train.
Mr. Mayor, I hate to interrupt right before we were on a roll, but the city attorney discovered that within the joint agreement, we did have a section left out on Yorktown, which I thought the school officials and I had come to an agreement on that. Just going back over it very quickly, there is a potential mitigation issue, as you know, on Yorktown Road with the, the school tennis court. And there's been some discussion about how those costs would be appropriated. And I think I told the city attorney, I'd rather have that out of the agreement. out of the agreement. Well, I think the understanding was we were still going to agree on Yorktown, but while we were in the process of shuffling that around, that got struck out of the agreement you were agreeing. I don't know if it was intentional to strike the whole thing out.
I thought we talked about striking it out because it could be months...
Right. We, we struck out the mitigation, but I thought we were still agreeing to the seventy-five, twenty-five on Yorktown.
Or the whole thing was struck out.
Right, right. So, um, I would take the city attorney's guidance on the issue at this point, maybe we could...
This may be a simple under misunderstanding. The email I received from school district's council was that he was going to remove Section two point three pertaining to mitigation.
Right.
And he did in fact remove that language because there were too many unknowns and the parties could not agree. But in so doing, in deleting the entirety of Section two point three, he has deleted the section pertaining to Yorktown, which, uh, the council person Hale specifically asked about. As you know, I, as Mark's answering questions, I'm always reviewing everything constantly, and so first of all, I want to thank you for your question because as he was answering that question and I was reviewing it, I saw that in deleting Section two point three, we have probably inadvertently deleted the petition intent as it relates to Yorktown. This may be a simple misunderstanding. I don't know that it was by any means intended to confuse the issue for us, but I think it's important that we revisit while we're still in session that agreement and have a motion and second that it was approved as presented by the city administrator, including particularly those portions of two point three that relate to Yorktown. And if it wasn't merely an oversight or was an intentional removal, we'll find that out and we'll figure it out and we'll negotiate it and we'll reach an agreement. But I do not want it on the record that the mayor is to sign the agreement that was in your packet because our staff at least understood it to be a fundamental element, that, that the intent with respect to petitioning for Yorktown would be included, and when they deleted the mitigation paragraph, they deleted the entirety of, of that section which would petition for Yorktown. So, um, if I could have the mayor consider a motion to make it very clear and/or to amend the approval and authorization of the mayor to sign to that it includes the section explanation in relationship as to the petitioning for Yorktown, we can go ahead and approve it with that caveat, or we can present it at a, at a additional council meeting. If, if it's just an oversight, it, it should be easily repaired by, by this motion, but I do not want it on the record and I do not want to adjourn this meeting that it was approved because it was very specifically approved with the Yorktown, uh...
Split.
...proviso, which council person Hale specifically brought to our attention, and when it was approved as presented, uh, there's some confusion there because as we presented it is not precisely what's in this document.
All right, so what's the motion?
Entertain a motion to clarify that the mayor is only, that the agreement is only approved and that the mayor is authorized to sign contingent upon the inclusion of the, uh, Section two point three relating to the development of Yorktown, but excluding references to mitigation.
Can somebody just say?
Make a motion, and I would renew the motion similar to that which our council has suggested.
You made the second.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion providing clarification that the agreement, the Unified Planning Committee agreement, um, is not authorized to sign, it's not, you haven't authorized the mayor to sign until the inclusion of, um, the split of costs on Yorktown Parkway are included in two point three. Um, I, it's, the mitigation's already been coun- canceled anyway, so that's all I need to say, right?
Yes, I believe that will address the issue, and I apologize and thank you for your indulgence in correcting the matter as, as we're constantly making sure that that which you approve is that which you approve.
Thank you for catching that.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You'll need to notify the school district. I noticed he was here earlier when we passed it, and... You might tell him what transpired. Okay, so we're item, we voted on the phones, right? All right, so we're on item twenty-three. Um, council, I would like one of you to call an executive session, uh, for the purposes of land acquisition to include the governing body, the city administrator, and the city attorney. How long you recommend?
And could we have the public works director?
Public works director?
Yep.
How long do you recommend?
Initially, Mr. Mayor, you and I discussed fifteen minutes.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion by C.R., second by Greg to recess into executive session for preliminary discussion relating to the acquisition of real property pursuant to KSA seventy-five four thirty-one nine B subsection six, uh, to include the governing body, the city administrator, the city attorney, and the public works director for approximately fifteen minutes. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Anybody know the KU score?
Stop it.
That's a little chilly, actually.
I guess we're all here. Counsel, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Brian, second by Carolyn, to come out of executive session. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Unfortunately, we did not conclude our conversation there concerning this first executive action, uh, session item, so I need another motion to recess an executive session, uh, for preliminary discussion relating to the acquisition of real property pursuant to KSA 75, forty-third night, forty-three nineteen B subsection C, include the governing body, the city administrator, city attorney, and polygar's director for fifteen minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Greg. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
...
One, two, three.
I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
Second.
Motion by C R., second by Brian to come out of executive session. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, I'd ask you if there's any motions to be had here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement on property at twelve sixteen East Thirteenth Street, Andover, Kansas, in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars, subject to all the terms and conditions as the city attorney provides on the contract itself, including revisions that have recently been made by the proposed seller in such a term as has been agreed upon.
Second.
Motion by C R., second by Caroline to authorize the mayor to execute the real estate contract as will be revised. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any further motions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a just compensation for a drainage easement relating to the Lafayette-Herman paving improvements in the total amount of one thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Second. All right, motion by C R., second by Greg to approve an offer of just compensation for a drainage easement concerning the Herman-Lafayette drainage project in the amount of eighteen hundred and fifty-five dollars. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-four, someone to be so kind as to call an executive session for personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to K S A seventy-five four thirty-one nine B subsection one to include just the governing body for approximately fifteen minutes.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion by C R., second by Greg to go on executive session. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Four minutes.
Do we want to turn on the Cajun game?
If I wanted to do that, I've been watching on my phone all night. Yeah, I got that recorded too. Thank you.
I think if you're not doing anything tomorrow, we've got planning permission.
I actually do have something to do tomorrow night, but thank you.
We did just, FYI, if we did discover that, we could put what we just...
All right, counsel, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Brian, second by CR to come out of executive session. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any motion?
What? Sorry?
I was just hiccuping at the other, at the joint aye.
Motion carries. Item 25.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the 2019 salary pay plan as recommended by the Salary Review Committee.
Second.
All right, motion by Greg and a second by Brian to approve the 2019 salary pay plan as recommended. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. What I was a little fuzzy on was, city administrator, are you under contract?
Yeah.
You're allowed. So appropriate motion would be to approve or disapprove. I'm just kidding. What are we trying to approve here?
Mark is included in the pay plan, so if you're going with the 3 percent, he's in the pay plan already.
Item 26, we're down to member items.
Me?
Yes.
I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Caroline.
The same, but just thank the staff. Again, a wonderful event, hometown Christmas. I know it's enjoyed by all. It was a little colder this year than what we had. I guess the schmores couldn't even be outside, it was so windy, so they microwaved schmores this year. But it was a great event, always is.
CR.
I would simply like to say that we had a very good meeting tonight and good luck, Merry Christmas to everybody.
Forgot the ho, ho, ho part.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. So ahead.
Staff, have anything?
We're way past when we need to, we need to go, but we need to talk about the calendar for 2019 at the next meeting. We don't want to get into it tonight.
Right now?
No, no, no. We'll do it at the next meeting. I just, there's a few conflicts like there is this year and we're just gonna have to work through them.
Anything else?
I move to adjourn, unless you're...
No. Second.
All right, motion by Caroline, second by Brian. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.